Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the Zoning Board of Appeals for the Village of Toccoha for the July 11th, 2018. Please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Nancy, please take the roll.
President.
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 President. We have a pretty long agenda tonight, so let's get started. Item number one is the approval of the minutes of the June 13th, 2018 meeting. Does anybody have any additions, deletions, questions?
No.
None? Seeing none, I'll make a motion to approve the minutes. So have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. Next will be 283 Marlborough Dale Road, converting a basement to a finished basement. Is the applicant present? Please step forward to the mic, state your name for the record.
Robert Lababara.
Thank you. Okay, so you presented last meeting. We asked and got our questions answered. Were there any changes made between last month and this month? None? All right. Things look like they're in order. As you know, the public hearing is still open, so I need to give people the chance to get up and speak before I let you sit. Any members have any additional questions?
No.
No.
Very good. You can have a seat. Thank you. Is there anyone from the public who wishes to comment on 283 Marlborough Dale Road? Please step forward. Seeing none, I'm going to make a motion to close the public hearing. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Public hearing is now closed. Does any member have a motion that they would like to read regarding 283 Marlborough Dale Road?
Yes, I have a motion, a resolution form of motion.
Thank you.
Okay. The application for an area variance requested by Laura Jerosko, whose address is 283 Marlborough Dale Road, New York, Section 42, Block 2, Lot 14, for relief of the following section of the zoning code 5-1.6, nonconforming buildings and uses. Secret resolution. Based on this application as submitted, the Zoning Board of Appeals finds and determines that, one, the action taken herein is an unlisted action subject to the requirements of SEACRA and implementing regulations; two, the Zoning Board of Appeals is in possession of all information reasonably necessary to make the determination as to the environmental significance of the proposed area variance application; three, that the action taken herein shall not have a significant adverse impact on the environment, and is declared that a negative declaration is hereby adopted with regards to this action.
Thank you. Nancy, please poll the board.
In favor.
In favor.
In favor.
In favor. Please continue.
Okay. Applicant is seeking to alter an existing basement by adding a new family room, bathroom and bedroom to the premises located at 283 Marlborough Dale Road, Toccoha. Since the premises is a nonconforming two-family home, the finishing of the basement is expanding the nonconformity. The applicant is seeking relief from Section 5-1.6 of the Village of Toccoha zoning code, which prohibits the enlargement of a nonconformity. Based on the work sessions and public hearing, this board finds as follows. Recommendation is for an area variance to be granted as to the benefit to the applicant of the area variance outweighs the detriment to health, the detriment to health, safety and welfare of the neighborhood. The applicant has demonstrated through its submissions and presentation that it has met all aspects of the five-prong test to the satisfaction of this board.
Okay, thank you. Nancy, please poll the board.
In favor.
In favor.
In favor.
In favor. Congratulations. That's it. Good luck. All right, good luck. Thank you. You can hang around if you want, but you can go. Thanks. Next item would be 242 White Plains Road, looking to put a home on their back piece of property, but they have adjourned. Next item is 16 Columbus Avenue, looking to reduce the parking spaces from four to zero. Is the applicant present?
Mr. Chair, the applicant was present before. He said he'd be back here at 7:30. I don't see him here, so you want to put on second call?
Yeah, I'll put him on second call. Thanks. Next would be 47 Rogers Street, legalizing a two-family to a three-family, but they have also adjourned. Next is 48 Yonkers Avenue, looking to put a two-story addition, needs an area variance. Is the applicant present? Please step forward, state your name for the record. Yeah, you can put those up if it's easier first.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. My name is John Yanacito. I'm an architect, and I'm representing Stephanie and Chris Carrato this evening. We are proposing an addition and alterations to the existing single-family residence located at 48 Yonkers Avenue. The proposed scope of work will include a two-story addition at the side of the existing residence, which is highlighted here on the site plan. We're also proposing interior alterations on the first and second floor. The existing structure is currently nonconforming with respects to the front yard setback. The proposed front facade on both the first and second floor will align with the existing, and we are requesting an area variance for a new front yard setback. The existing and proposed front yard setback is 12.5 feet, and the required is 25 feet, a deficiency of 12.5 feet. The proposed addition will be in keeping with the character of the existing structure and will not have any adverse character or environmental impacts on the neighborhood. A cover letter was submitted to the board members earlier today at the work session, and it outlined the compliance with the five principal points for the area variance.
Good.
Thank you for your time, and I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Sure. Do me a favor and step over to the drawing.
Sure. Are you bringing the mic with me?
Yeah, thanks.
Okay.
Just for the, yeah, just for the public's interest at home and clarification, the yellow two-story addition, you don't need any variance for that. You're still within your side yard setback.
There's a small portion here in the front that also requires, so right now, the front porch, the one-story portion, is its back 12.5.
Right.
So this little yellow space here requires the 12.5. This piece here, this dotted line here represents the 25-foot setback line.
Right.
So that second-story portion is like 20 feet.
But it's front yard setback only?
Front yard setback only.
Right.
Side is all good.
And what's the FAR in the House after your proposed addition?
So FAR existing is 24, 24 square feet, and the proposed will be 32, 86 square feet.
Good.
What's the max allowed by code?
Of 50%, 37, 50. We'll be at 44%.
So you'll be well under the FAR max?
Correct.
Good question. Good. So basically, the small area in the front, that little bump out, it's going to match the existing, which is 12 and a half feet back?
So here's the front elevation. So this is an existing covered porch.
Right.
Today, we're going to open up the existing covered porch, and it'll be an open porch at the front entrance, and then this will be a new, well, an existing enclosed and new enclosed porch, all at the same elevation, one story, same setback to the front yard. Then beyond that point is the expansion of the second story, which will align with the existing also.
Right.
And then at the back of the house, it actually drops down, back down to a one-story because there's a balcony off the master bedroom overlooking the backyard.
Good.
And could you go back to the other side and just tell us what the existing building coverage is on the lot and what the max allowed by code is and what it will be with the new?
Existing building coverage is 1840 square feet, 24.5%. The maximum is 3,000 square feet, 40%, and with the proposed, will be at 24, 49, 32.7%.
So you'll be at 32% and 40% is allowed by code, so you're well under both on coverage of the lot, you're well under on FAR and...
That also includes the existing garage as far as the coverage.
Great, great. So it's only the minor thing of the front yard which is keeping with the current structure, physical structure?
Yeah, you're not making it any worse. It's aligning it, right.
And maintain the existing nonconforming setback.
Okay. Thank you.
That's great. Yeah, so no additional coverage and no additional FAR?
Right.
No, no.
Perfect.
There will be additional, but we're still under the...
Oh, under the, yes. Any other questions?
No.
Any concerns?
No.
Good questions. Thanks.
Ma'am.
Okay. You can have a seat. We're going to open the public hearing on this, all right? Thank you very much. Is there anyone from the, no, I need to make a motion to open the public hearing on 48 Yonkers Avenue. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Is there anyone from the public that wishes to speak regarding 48 Yonkers Avenue? Please step forward. Okay, seeing none, I'm going to, we're going to leave the public hearing open until the next meeting, at which time we can close it, and hopefully, provided there are no changes, we should be able to vote at that time. Thanks for your time. Good luck. All right.
Enjoy the summer.
Yeah.
You too.
Nice September.
Thank you very much.
16 came in. 16 Columbus.
Next on the agenda will be 16 Columbus Avenue, reducing parking spaces from four to zero is the request. Is the applicant is present? They're already up here. Thank you.
I'm Spaloun for Pinos Pellet.
All right.
How are you doing? Returning on my second visit, so I'm not sure what I'm supposed to present to you guys at this point. Maybe you can help me out with that.
Have there been any material changes to your business or to your request in the last month?
None at all.
Thank you. All right.
Okay.
You're still going to take one spot, correct?
Yeah, I am going to take one spot, yeah.
Okay. You can be seated.
You're not, yeah, you're not reducing it to zero, you're reducing it to one.
To one, yeah, that's correct.
And that's mainly because, how should I say, your hours are mainly evening and night hours, correct?
Right, yep.
Great. Okay, you can have a seat, and we can wrap this up. Public hearing is still open on this. Is there anyone from the public who would like to comment regarding the parking variance for 16 Columbus Avenue? Seeing none, I'm going to make a motion to close the public hearing. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Just want to point out again, as was just stated, the reason that this board is willing to reduce the parking from four to one is that the business hours is primarily in the evening and not during the day. So there are other businesses in the area that we have required to get the proper amount of parking because they're open all day long.
And the most important part of that is, very close to the business, is a municipal lot, which after 5 o'clock does not require permits or meters that people can regularly use and access.
Correct. Excellent. Does anybody have a motion regarding 16 Columbus Avenue that they would like to present?
Mr. Chairman, I have a motion in form of a resolution.
Thank you.
Village Board of Toccoha, Zoning Board of Appeals, Area Variance Resolution. The application for an area variance requested by Westchester Painting Party Incorporated, whose address is 16 Columbus Avenue, Toccoha, New York, Section 33, Block 8, Lot 1, for relief from the following section of the zoning code 5-1.2, off-street parking. Secret resolution. Based on this application as submitted, this Zoning Board of Appeals finds and determines that, one, the action taken herein is an unlisted action subject to the requirements of SEACRA and its implementing regulations; two, this Zoning Board of Appeals is in possession of all information reasonably necessary to make the determination as to the environmental significance of the proposed area variance application; three, that the action taken herein shall not have a significant adverse impact on the environment, and it is declared that a negative declaration is hereby adopted with regard to this action.
Thank you. Do I have a second to the motion?
Second.
Nancy, please poll the board.
In favor.
In favor.
In favor.
In favor.
In favor. Okay. Good luck. Thank you.
I've got to finish reading.
Oh, we had the second piece. I apologize. See, I'm trying to get you out early.
Applicant is an existing business doing business as Pinos Pellet. Applicant's business is a group painting class with a wine bar. Applicant is seeking to reduce its required off-street parking from four to zero as most of his business is conducted after normal nine-to-five business hours. This board, after its work session and public hearing, finds that the business is primarily a nighttime business, and even the few classes during the day will not tax the street parking in the surrounding area, which is metered and permit parking. After discussions with the applicant at the work session and public hearing, the applicant would be amenable to one off-street parking space. This board deems that one space would be sufficient based on the type of business and the normal hours of operation of this business being primarily at night. If it is determined by the building inspector in the future that the business model has changed and that the classes become primarily in the day, then the applicant must come back before this board to determine if more off-street parking spaces are required. Therefore, recommendation is for an area variance to be granted as its benefit to the applicant of the area variance outweighs the detriment to health, safety and welfare of the neighborhood. The applicant has demonstrated through his submissions and presentation that it has met all aspects of the five-prong test to the satisfaction of this board. This board notes that a violation is currently pending in the Village of Toccoha's Justice Court due to the applicant failing to maintain the required four spaces called for in his site plan approval. A condition of disapproval is that the violation be satisfied.
Thank you. Do I have a second to the motion?
Second.
Nancy, please poll.
I second.
Sorry.
Second, Scalzo. Uh, yes, Member Fury.
In favor.
Member Scalzo.
In favor.
In favor.
Chairman Ray.
In favor. I think now you can go home. So, as we read, if the business model changes, you're going to have to come back, okay? All right. Thank you very much. Good. Next agenda item is 273 Columbus Avenue. It's a new business looking for a special permit. Is the applicant present? Please step forward, state your name for the record.
Good evening, Chairman, members of the board. Louis Campana, architect for the applicant's china and Roderick Andrade. The applicant reside at 53 Hyatt Avenue in Yonkers. We're before you this evening seeking a special permit for a proposed yoga studio known as Yogi Life, Inc. This studio will be located on the second floor of a building in the business district known as 273 Columbus Avenue, Section 42, Block 9, Lot 15. Pursuant to Section 4-6.1, subsection B, line 4, a yoga studio otherwise considered a sports and health club is permitted use with zoning board approval. The owners and I have had discussions in respect to operating hours. The studio will hold two classes daily, Monday through Friday, and one morning class on Saturday and Sundays. Morning classes will start at 9:30 a.m. with a duration of one hour, and evening classes will begin at 7:00 p.m. and run until 8:15. During each class, there will be one employee also acting as the yoga instructor, along with a maximum of 14 attendees. The current unit has one designated spot in the building's private lot and will be used solely by the instructor. After 5:00 p.m. daily and all day on weekends, 13 onsite spots can be utilized. Members will also use public metered parking. In addition to the metered spots, the Crestwood train station is located directly across the street from this particular site and will also serve as an efficient means of transportation for members on a regular basis. It is in my professional opinion that this establishment will not have a negative effect on vehicular traffic, will not negatively impact the existing quality of the environment, and will enhance the health and welfare of the community and adjacent neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you.
And to be clear, this is on the second floor above the old Chase space, essentially?
Correct. On the north side of the building.
So where the wine store is, I guess, above the wine store?
Yes, that's right.
No? Close? Okay. Thank you.
Any members have any other questions?
Yeah, I got one I forgot to ask. Is there an elevator in that building?
I don't believe there is.
No? Okay.
And you are relocating your business from East Chester, is that correct? Could you give a little overview of your experience running a yoga studio, a fitness center?
Of course. So we're located in front of the MacLecon Seption on White Plains Road. We host the same one morning class in the morning, which is mostly gentle yoga and more of like a morning stretch, and then in the evening can be a little bit more various, rigorous and as well as gentle. So we're here to give all, I want to propose everyone, all levels, all types of people, people who have never done exercise to people who have been exercising.
So how long have you been in business in East Chester at your current location?
One year.
Great. And you've had good reception there?
Yes.
So now you're looking to expand and make a permanent home, essentially?
Yes, absolutely.
Great.
Good. So you already have a client base, right? They'll come over and...
Yes, and a lot of them actually live in Crestwood, so it helps a lot.
Excellent.
Wonderful.
More questions?
I got no questions.
Any other questions? Oh, great.
I mean, I would just point out that, you know, it's only two classes a day.
Right.
They're at non-rush hour times, and so it doesn't seem to be a big...
Example parking, yep.
Big issue at the moment.
Maybe somewhere down the road, maybe expand in the morning or something like that.
I know usually people like after 5:00, after work, usually. More of a stressful job that they do. But, which we did speak about like after 5:00 with the ample 13 spots, even in the back, parking would be no issue as well.
Now, Gary, do these special use permits, do we, do they have a timeframe on them?
No, not the...
One-year, two-year, five-year?
No, there's no timeframe unless the board imposes one. The only timeframe would be the, what is it, filling stations or repair for the automobile repair stations. It's five years, but not this.
I guess the only concern would be is if they start doing eight classes a day, and so there's just lots of cars going in and out. At two classes a day, I don't think it's a big issue. You know, I don't know where the tipping point is exactly, but it's a slight concern.
But they have limited space, but, again, how many people in a class? Max?
There would be one instructor and 14 participants.
Right. So even if you had back-to-back classes, the max you would have would be 15 people there at a time.
Correct.
We'll change over and everything then.
Yeah. All right. Well, we could think about the stipulation of coming back in a couple of years, if you think about it, if that's a concern.
It's worth thinking about.
Sure. No, it is. Any other questions? Thank you. You can have a seat. Want to make a motion to open the public hearing for 273 Columbus Avenue for the new business special permit? Anyone from the, I'm sorry, do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Is there anyone from the public who would like to comment regarding 273 Columbus Avenue? Seeing none, I'm going to leave the public hearing open until our next meeting, at which time we can close that hearing. If there are no material changes, we will be able to vote at that time. All right? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Have a great night.
Thank you.
Now we're going to take a 45-minute coffee break and make Oakland Avenue wait. The last agenda item is 85 Oakland Avenue. Please step forward.
There should be some clips if you want to clip that up there.
We have no tape, nothing.
Don't sign anything. I already said we've got tabs.
Maybe do that.
Okay.
We have paper clips here, but I don't know if it's going to be big enough.
There you go.
All right. Thank you. Please state your name for the record.
Glenn Ladue.
Brooke Ladue. I'm sorry, I used to...
And you're looking for an area variance to widen your driveway to eliminate some street parking, correct?
That's right, yes.
All right. So if you could, as you did in the work session, explain to us what you're doing and why, and if you could take the mic and go over to the drawing, because that will speak volumes.
Okay, so what my wife and I would like to do is add another off-street parking space in the front yard, which would be in front of the garage that is around the back of the house. We currently have one...
Sorry to interrupt. Cameraman? Lee? Thank you.
There we go.
There we go. Thank you.
So this would be this, this would be the space here. This is our current driveway. It's a narrow driveway that basically runs around the house and to a garage that's too narrow to park in. We have one off-street, one on-street parking tag, and basically, we need another spot for a car. Our street doesn't have a sidewalk. We have two young children, and unloading them and loading them in the street is very dangerous.
Right.
Yeah, you, this is, your address is 85 Oakland Avenue, right? And 85 Oakland Avenue unfortunately is a kind of a throughway. Not everyone goes down to Columbus. They take a shortcut through Oakland, and so there's pretty heavy traffic there. Is that correct?
That's right, yeah. Yeah, it's a, I even use it as a shortcut sometimes.
I think we all do, that's for sure.
Now, you're going to be, how should I say, the area that you're designating is in front of the existing garage, am I correct?
It's exactly in the same location that the garage is in, where the garage is in the rear of the house.
But that's still leaving you with a significant amount of front yard and lawn.
We would still have 28 feet of yard across the front of the house.
And in front of the main house.
Right. I mean, that's an excellent point. The yard in front of the house remains the same, and if your garage door were not in the back and it were in the front, it wouldn't even be here.
Exactly.
Okay, would you consider maybe shortening that, Donnie, go back to the drawing, please? Thank you. Yeah? Maybe a couple of feet?
Yeah, it'd be no problem. We could even come this way, five feet.
We're not so much worried about that, we're worried about...
This way.
Yeah, coming in a little.
Yeah, no problem either, because right now we have 22 feet, which is, it's a pretty big area because this side here, there's no wall, so that car could be very close to the edge.
Right. What we're interested in as a zoning board is, we're interested in keeping as much grass in front of our houses as possible. We view that as much prettier than having driveways and cars in front of the house. We know it's a reality of where we live, and there's many different lots and houses that have, that have cars. We're also very sympathetic to people that are growing their family and have children and need to live in houses. And so you're also, I think you should state for the public, talk about some of the additions you're doing to the house as well, what you're doing by right within code.
Right.
So you're actually investing in this community and setting roots down here. Is that correct?
Yes, so we bought the house 12 years ago, and we didn't have children at the time. Since we've had children, we decided to make the house bigger to accommodate our growing family, so in the rear of the house, we added a nice-sized family room, and we're going to relocate our deck off the back, which will still leave us with a nice backyard. And we put a master bathroom up over the garage as well. So, looks like we're staying for a while.
Very nice, very nice.
No, it's nice to invest in the community. It'll look great. And again, I just want to keep repeating that the garage is separate. You're not looking to take away the lawn in front of your house, all right? As we mentioned in the work session, we've turned other people down because they wanted to literally park in front of the house. That's not the case here. You'll be parking in front of your garage. It just happens to be the rear of the garage. I mean, maybe at some point you may change that, decide to put the door in the front of the garage, but if the door is in the front of the garage, I don't think anybody would, you know, even question it.
By right, they wouldn't even have to ask if they could do it.
Right, correct.
And you're still leaving a substantial front lawn and everything, front yard.
Right. As Member Scalzo said, the front lawn still sits in front of the house, so I just want, I want to be clear that we're not giving you a consideration to park your car in front of your house. You'll be parking your car in front of your garage. Which just happens to be the back of your garage.
Right, exactly.
Any further, any additional questions?
No.
None.
Good.
All right, thank you. You can have a seat. Appreciate it. I'm going to make a motion to open the public hearing on 85 Oakland Avenue. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Seeing that there's no one from the public that needs or wants to speak, I'm going to leave the public hearing open until our next meeting, at which time, provided there's no material changes, we will be able to vote on this, all right? Thank you for your patience. Sorry for the delay.
Thank you.
You have a great night. Any additional business questions? Going to make a motion to close this meeting. Do I have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. Good night, Tuckahoe.
Nice September.